I'd like to call to order the March 7th special meeting of the Pennsbury School Board. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiances. If everyone will rise. Mr. Burdenek, can you please do a roll call?
Mrs. Abresha.
Here.
Dr. Delwich.
Here.
Mr. Canon.
Here.
Mrs. Lamming.
Here.
Mrs. Paulski.
Here.
Mr. Prokopia.
Here.
Dr. Steer.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Waldorf.
Present.
Mr. Massengill. Mr. Ali. All members present.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to welcome everyone out tonight for our interviews with the two architect finalists. So before we get started, I just wanted to announce that we met on February 29th, last Thursday, for a leadership training for the board that was provided by the Bucks County Intermediate Unit. Tonight, we're meeting to interview the two architectural teams that are finalists for the Pennsbury High School Design Project. This has been a unique process for the district. We wanted to fully engage the wider community at a very early stage in the process. So I just want to review how we got here. We started with a pre-design process, actually. A community committee that was composed of students, faculty, administration staff, and community members met and talked about what the school district needs in a high school building. They did tours of the current high school buildings, and they also toured two recently constructed high school buildings in the area, and then came back together and really fleshed out the benefits of renovating West and adding on to it, or building new. And they unanimously recommended building a new high school. That happened in the fall. The school board agreed, and we sent out a request for proposals and got nine responses. And I just wanted to thank all nine architectural firms that submitted responses. That was a lot of work, and they had great ideas, and we really appreciated it, but we had to narrow it down. So the district selected another committee, a District Committee of Students, Staff, Administration, and Board Representatives, to take that nine to four. And those four presentations were given to the broader community just a few short weeks ago. We got almost 150 responses from the community with feedback about what they liked and what they didn't like from the presentations. And we really value everyone who took the time to come and see the presentations, to review them after the fact, and to give that feedback to the district. The committee then met again, and reviewing all of that feedback brought the four down to two. They also helped develop the questions that we're going to hear tonight from the school board members, because we didn't want each school board member to come in and ask the same question, because they had the same concern. So we tried to spread it out and make sure that all of the concerns that were expressed were addressed tonight in a number of different areas. So that brings us to tonight. So thank you all for coming out. Tonight, we will hear a question and answer session with the two firms that made it to the final stage. They will have the opportunity to show some slides. They did get the categories that the questions were going to be in, but not the questions themselves. After this, we'll move forward. Hopefully, we'll be able to make a decision at the March Action Meeting, which is the 21st, and then we'll proceed from there. This is just the conceptual design process so far. Once an architectural firm is picked, then we'll go into the full design process, which will involve a lot of different community engagement, and will take approximately a year to come to a final design plan with a building cost estimate to go with it. And at that point, we'll go forward with an Act 34 hearing for the community. So that's just to put this whole evening in perspective, where we've been and where we're going. That being said, the beginning of any board meeting, special meeting, starts with public comment. So, thank you for coming. We do have some members of the public who have signed up to speak. I just want to remind everyone that opportunity is offered for public comment. You'll have five minutes. We'd like you to state your name and your municipality, and then you'll have your five minutes uninterrupted. It's not a question and answer session. We listen to your concerns and take that back. And then we'll move on with the interviews. So the first person to speak tonight is Brian Brown. Is Brian Brown here?
I had to call an audible.
All right, everyone. Hope you can hear me. I'm Brian Brown, proud graduate of Pennsbury High School, class 1984. I live in Falls Township, Pharaohs Hill Section. Basically, I'm here tonight just to give my opinion on what's going on. I'm totally in support of a new school. You can't just do Band-Aid anymore as far as repairs of the existing schools. So it's bittersweet for me, because I got a lot of memories over at East, my two, last two years there. But I went through Pennsbury K through 12. Very proud alumni, bleed orange and black. My only concerns are all the designs that I was at the presentation meeting, they were excellent. They all deserve it. They deserve a round of applause. And I just feel a couple things I would like to see addressed, no matter who gets the bid. One, Pennsbury is a very proud, rich, tradition school district. We have an excellent arts musical program. Academics excellent. There's graduates have done amazing things after they left Pennsbury. And also, we got a great athletics department. I would like to see each of them celebrating. You come into that school and say, hey, we're Pennsbury. Show it off. We just had a 75th anniversary. Show it off. We got so much to celebrate. And which leads me to my next point. We have a wall of honor that newly Pennsbury Hall of Fame, as well as the Athletic Hall of Fame. I would like to see them showing off. We got people that served our country and made the ultimate sacrifice. We got people that have done amazing things that are in the Hall of Fame, as well as the Athletic Hall of Fame. Coaches, players, distinguished service. Let's show it off. And as far as the classrooms, I think these kids deserve the best. I think they deserve state-of-the-art classrooms if you guys can do it. Let them learn. Let the teachers teach. Yeah, it's gonna take something to do as far as money, but you have to look at it this way. It's a long-term investment, not only for Pennsbury School District, the Pennsbury community, as well as proud alumni. We need to show it off. And there's a couple designs I really, really like, and I'm hoping one of them does end up being the final one. Because also, you need to show off Sports Night. Bring it back to Pennsbury. We need to have it on campus. I was in Sports Night both years at Charles Bain. That place rocked. It was awesome. Nothing like coming out of that gym and seeing both sides fill. Which leads me to my next point, as far as the gymnasium. Let's make it a little bigger. Let's show it off for the girls and boys' basketball teams, as well as Sports Night. We got a jewel of a stadium sitting over at East Fountain Field. It's beautiful. Add to it. Let's keep the tradition going. If you're for it, great. If you're not, I understand. There's pros and cons. But you know what? We gotta make the investment now, because if we just do a Band-Aid 20 years down the road, we're gonna be doing the same thing. So let's do it. Let's do it right. Let's make Pennsbury, the Pennsbury community, proud. I want to thank the school board for doing all they do for us and the community and the kids. That's the most important thing, is the kids right now. That's what this is all about. But if we're gonna do it, let's do it right. Let's show off the orange and black. Let's show off Pennsbury, our history, our tradition. This is our time to shine. Let's do it. And to the two firms that are here tonight, thank you very much. I wish you both best of luck. I know there's only one winner, but you guys did an excellent job at the presentation. I was very impressed. And just keep that in mind, whoever wins this presentation, keep the orange and black, keep the tradition, the history, the Hall of Fame's, everything tied in, so these kids know what Pennsbury is about. Thank you very much.
The next community member to speak is Mr. Andrew Dell.
Andrew Dell, Andrew Dell, Falls Township, also a Pennsbury graduate of '86. And this is nothing against the proposed bidders. I think any new building is gonna look great. The problem I have is the academics in this school. You guys are so focused on this new building. I think if you put in order your priorities, the first priority would be the kids. You could teach these kids in a tent, if you do it right. Now, everybody loves something new. Everyone here has probably bought a new car at some point in time, and then six months into the payment booklet, you look back and say, well, maybe I shouldn't have done that, or maybe I should have waited. You know, you guys are doing something during a course of time where the interest rates are unusually high, costs of goods are unusually high. You know? And this Band-Aid theory on putting a Band-Aid on these schools, this has become a self-fulfilling prophecy. I pulled a right-to-know on all the repairs you guys did at these schools over the course of five years. I don't think you spent more than $2 million on all the schools. So you wanted these schools to fail. You wanted these places to go to hell. And now, we're left saying, hey, we can't fix these schools. You could fix anything. I've seen cars from the 1930s rebuilt and look as good as they were put out. So you can do this cheaper. And I'm not against, actually, a new school. If the academics were up to par, you guys should be focusing more on the academics, not brick and mortar. You know? You know, the way this is going, I figure you should probably make room for a statue of Karl Marx and Lenin in the lobby with half the programs that you guys are teaching here. You know? And I would like to maybe see that maybe some of you have some skin in the game. You know, once the change orders start coming in, every percent over the original bid, maybe you guys should take a reduction in pay by that same percentage. Because you can easily spend other people's money. Third parties always can spend everyone else's money. But if this was your money, would you make the same decision? I don't think so. The elderly that you guys are gonna be pushing out of the community by the tax increase of over 20% over the next five years is very disturbing to me. And, you know, and the fact that you guys have, you're spending this money right now on studies and things like that, this should be brought in front of a referendum vote to see if the community even wants this building. You're already spending money that you don't even know if the community wants this. And I think by law, it does have to go to referendum. I'm exactly sure of the cutoff number, but I think this thing should be put up to vote, because you're gonna be driving some people right out of their houses. And you may raise the property values for people who can afford to stay, but I believe there's gonna be a decline. And I've been in these schools. I've been in this gym. Okay, it's not a modern gym, but if you spent some money on this gym, it would look perfect again, okay? The bones of this school, the structure of this school, is solid, okay? Okay, the plumbing, the electric, the HVAC, all costs a lot of money, but not $250 to $300 million, plus interest. And where the interest rates are right now, I think you guys say you're gonna be at like $580 million to pay back? I mean, you're leaving this debt, just like the federal government does, to all our kids. And the next board members are gonna have to figure out how to juggle the finances to pay for any of this stuff. And I just think you should rethink it. And the fact that you're, sorry, I don't know how much money has been spent to date on the proposals, on the studies, on everything else, but I think you should wait and see if this thing is actually wanted and the community actually wants this school, before you start spending another dime on it. And again, this is nothing against the professionals that are here. I'm sure either firm could build a beautiful facility, which, again, somewhere in the future, somewhere where interest rates are a little bit more reasonable, and maybe you guys save a little cash and put a little money, put a lot of money down on this, so you're not financing everything. You know, I just don't think we're in a position to purchase this, and I have a feeling if there's a problem at some other school, you guys are gonna have no money to fix it. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. The next speaker is Mr. Tim Daly.
So, Tim Daly, Lower Makefield Township. So first, I'm gonna take a quick moment to thank Ms. Delwich for introducing me to this book, Yamas and Niyamas, during her swearing-in ceremony. The book provides a great philosophical, ethical guidelines that will lead to a happy and fruitful life that I think is reflective of what we should be thinking about tonight. The author shares that if you live a life of nonviolence, truthfulness, non-stealing, non-excess, and non-possessiveness, that it will lead to purity, contentment, self-dispelion, and self-study, and surrender in your life. Very good read. I bought an extra copy for you, Dr. Smith, as a gift, because I think you really need to read through these guidelines before you move on to the building construction project, especially in the areas of truthfulness and in non-excess. Perhaps it will encourage you to tell the community this building will actually cost $1 billion, when including interest on the bonds, not the $250 million that keeps being out in press release propaganda, and it will also teach you how to rein in some of the lavish building design ideas that were presented. Since the last presentation meeting, social media has displayed a significant response to this project at about a 90% rate of negativity on approximately 1,000 comments through our news organizations. I've sent all of you on the board the general negative response to the design plans and the outrageous debt you want to place on the community. The general consensus suggests you have no chance at winning a referendum. So if you can't win the referendum, then what are we doing here tonight in wasting time and money? Act 34 to 11 strictly forbids Pennsbury from moving forward on this project without a referendum. The math formula caps you at $123 million with an 8% variance of up. That takes you up to $132 million. There is no way around the referendum unless the members of this board and the administration want to go to jail for two years for violating state law regarding elective rights. You have no chance of getting an exemption from PDE, given your 100% over the cap limit. If I am incorrect, Dr. Smith, I encourage you tonight to put the sixth-grade math problem from PDE on the screen and explain to everyone here how Robert and I are incorrect in our assertions that you cannot spend more than $130 million. Tonight, we have two firms representing KCBA and Crabtree-Rorba. In one corner, we have KCBA, who is a firm that we know very well, that has provided an architectural design plan that is now being constructed at Bain, which flows water onto flat roofs, while the project is well over budget with no end-in-sight change orders. Just this evening, the facilities committee had a $200,000 change order put forward as a result of misguidance in that plan. And I would love to hear KCBA explain why they screwed up. We also have, in the other corner, Crabtree and Rorba, a firm that a few weeks ago presented prudence and cost management and his experience in working on large projects that require a referendum. I have said from the beginning that I support the needs for fixes in these buildings. I've even converted some of the supporters here, or objectors here, to become supporters. You guys have seen me do it. So I'm in. So I personally spent the last eight years walking through these halls during back-to-school night, and I'm aware of the issues through my daughter's complaints about the facilities. My objections are about the process and what appears to be an over-fraud on this community with five re-forecasts by PFM to get financing numbers down, which, after Robert and I publicly objected to them. They've represented schools such as Upper Marion, Colonial, and Avon Grove with awful advice that gambled on bond rates. The Philadelphia Inquirer story details $40 million in losses that those communities took as a result of the awful advice that you guys are receiving from PFM. And if you proceed forward, what you're going to do is you're going to put us into junk bond status by 2029, based on the plan PFM has presented. So I frankly have very little interest in seeing the presentations tonight or the interviews, because I find them to be meaningless. The architectural firms here need to talk tonight about what is Plan B, because that is never happening in our community, and you will never get that through. So what can we do for $150 million? What is the best option we can put forward that's financially reasonable and respectful to everyone here in the community, given the fact that we are the highest increased-tax school district in this state over the last 10 years? And the people in Falls Township haven't even seen what's coming to them yet when the dump closes with the triple-duty hammering that they're gonna get with taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Daly.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. And the last public speaker is Mr. Robert Abrams.
Robert Abrams, Lower Makefield Township. Transparency. I made a phone call Monday to the Department of Education, and I am speaking with the person you were supposed to be speaking to about this. I also got a response from the Department of Education for my right-to-know about the paperwork Pennsbury submitted. No documents available. When I spoke to the person, he said, "I heard nothing about a new high school. I know about Bain." So nobody knows about this unless they're watching Pennsbury TV, except for the community. KCBA was the contractor at Bain. There's a 20-degree, 15, 20-degree roof on the new entrance, and it flows west to east. All the water runs down into a six-inch gutter. And the overflow goes onto a flat roof, sits there on a flat roof, and the taxpayers get to pay for another million-dollar roof every couple years. What a wonderful design. And then, when it snows, the gutter clogs, and the water, since it gets sunlight all day long, continues to run off on a flat roof. Great. All right, we need to be very careful here. The Crabtree people mentioned, as Mr. Daly just said, that this needs to go to referendum, and I believe they're experienced in that. So I caution both of the finalists. If you can't do it for $250 million, I wouldn't be putting in a proposal. And a draw. Because simply, if you are, you better have a whole lot of liability insurance, because this community's gonna come ahead. And the design, no flat roofs. We're done with flat roofs. My house now has GAF 50-year shingles. A-frame roofs with 50-year shingles. That eliminates spending $4, $5, $6 million a year on roofing projects. 15 years I'm here, and we're doing $4, $5 million worth of roofs every single year. We only got 14 buildings. I can't figure out how we're doing that. In my discussion with Department of Education, there's no PlanCon, but you do have to submit five or six documents from PlanCon, D 24, 2 through 4, and 20 through 24, whatever it was, and you are required to follow everything in Act 34. Everything. There's been no meetings. I've seen documents that other schools have put out, full booklets explaining Act 34, explaining the design, explaining the cost. What do we have from Pennsbury? Oh, we're gonna have a meeting, and we'll show it to you tomorrow. Okay, you've done nothing here. You've done nothing, except try to tell the taxpayers to bend over and take it as far as you can shove it. That's what you've done. I've asked more than twice, more than five times, what is this going to cost? Let's go over what it's going to cost. Mr. Burdenek, who I'm sorry is not here, his first one from PFM, because he doesn't do this, he doesn't know how. He's asking for $367,480,000. So when we bring up that that's way over the limit that Pennsbury has, he got a $302,500, and that's June 16th to 23rd meeting. PFM then comes back with $301,660. Well, when I say that's real close to $302,500, you got left to spend. Now we're at $250,000. We're gonna make the numbers be whatever we need to make the numbers be and give it to the taxpayers big time, so we can take their money and we can distribute it to the unions. That is the definition of racketeering 101. There's no reason for West to come down. It's not even paid for. And my RTK tomorrow, I want to know what the balance is on West, because it was $40 million, and I'll bet you we owe $40 million on it. Somebody's gotta come up with some real numbers for this community. Superintendent has done nothing but lie and defraud this community. He has done nothing to prove $250 million. And until you do, this goes to referendum. Again, these two contractors here, these two architects, you better make sure your insurance liability is paid for. And by the way, your asset submissions for all the board members, the community needs to know where your assets are, so we can come get them. They're due April 1st, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams. That is the last name that we have for public comment, so we'll close public comment at 7:28. And that brings us to the architectural interviews. So our first firm is KCBA.
Good evening. We're gonna huddle around the table here for you.
So, yeah, you'll have to speak into the mic and share them. And there are nine board members. We're each gonna ask one question. Some of them have follow-up questions. And anticipate about five minutes per question, so that we can get them all in under an hour. Okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for coming tonight. And I'll get us started. So the first question is, Pennsbury is a proud community. How do you plan to involve staff, students, and interested community members in the design process to ensure that your school design promotes that sense of community?
Well, you're gonna start, but I'm gonna just say hello first. Thank you, guys, again, for having us back tonight. We do have some slides and abilities to answer some of those questions. I'm really glad my team is all here. We're all kind of huddled. And so we're gonna start by answering your first question. Laura, if you want to take that.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Laura Kazmerzak. I'm a project architect with KCBA. I have a bit of a unique role at KCBA in that I'm both a licensed architect and a certified interior designer. So I have a particular interest in the end-user's experience. So one of the favorite activities... So one of the favorite activities of all of us, or maybe it's just me here, but it's meeting with the end users, the community, the students, the teachers. You know, we do this series of weekly meetings with each of the departments. We're acutely aware of how strong your academics and arts and athletics, as well as your community events, like your prom and sports nights. We want to hear about that. You know, we want feedback on that, so that we can take that and apply it to what will become ultimate design in the end.
My name is Thaddeus Hines. I graduated Pensbury High School in 2011. So basically, after schematic design is fully complete, we take the project into design development. For the most part, design development is basically what it, those two words, we're developing the design. We take the schematics that community, that my community, has put together, and we start to bring more life into the design, into the plan. We basically have to start picking out everything from the carpet tile to the ceiling tiles. And everything that kind of goes into that, again, is going to be brought forth by the community. So let's say you want something to match what is already in the school, or on our existing schools. We'll be able to bring that back in the new building. So once we're through design development, we take it on to construction documents. And so, again, we have more community outreach. We have more, you know, every couple of weeks, or every week, really, we're going to be showing you our design. And construction documents is pretty much where we take design development and start putting in the real nitty-gritty details. We start to design the very fabric of the walls and everything that kind of goes into the building. So once we get about three-quarters of the way through, we have to go do our Act 34 hearing. And for the most part, to summarize that, is that the state requires us to have a community meeting where we show our design and we get feedback from the community. And for the most part, we will have more than fulfilled that obligation, seeing as that we will have more than 10-fold of these meetings pretty much every week for 10 months, or 13 months, really. And so, yeah, that's pretty much, you know, and then we start to build the building. And gold shovels in the ground, we'll hopefully be there with our apple cider and whatever, because it's school property, you can't have champagne. But anyway. But, yeah.
It's good to clarify that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so as Thaddeus and Laura were talking about, the community involvement is a very key part of our design. This building is not ours, it's yours. So we'll take, you know, we'll start with, you know, some of the things that you saw a week or two ago there with some of the designs we have, was just the first idea, and really start to get a lot of feedback. And throughout all of that process, and all of us here, meeting with your teachers, meeting with your students, meeting with your community members, there's a lot of collaboration. There's a lot of back and forth between our team to listen to everything that your needs are there, and then kind of lead that process moving forward, saying, "All right, this is what we heard from you guys. Now here's what we're interpreting that as, and here's what the building looks like from that feedback. Did we get it right?" You go, "Oh, yeah, that's pretty good, but let's change one or two things over there." All right, great. So we do that through a lot of the interactive videos and things that we showed before. And as Thaddeus was saying, you know, the Act 34 hearing is kind of towards the end of all of that process. Well, we'll have already met with the community dozens of times before that. So the state requires us to do it once, we're going to do it 20 times. So all of that information is out there. A lot of that is being digested by your community. Obviously, you have a very active and very vocal community. We've kind of enjoyed that process and seeing some of the comments to date, just from, you know, the last couple of design meetings. So we're excited and very ready to kind of lead that process with you.
Thank you. Next, Linda, do you want to?
Good evening, gentlemen. This is, and madam, this is a three-part question. I'll read it in its entirety, and if you want me to repeat any part of it, I'd be happy to. In your experience, do you believe the budget, scope, and timelines outlined in the request for proposal are reasonable? First part. What is your record for your project staying on time and on budget? And can you explain how you will work to avoid, minimize change orders?
Okay. Oh, yeah. Hi, I'm Mark Morella. I'm a senior project manager at K C B A and associate. What was the first part of your question again?
The first part was, in your experience, do you believe the budget, scope, and timelines outlined in the request for proposal are reasonable?
I can start with that as well, as you're talking about budget control and things. Let's get turned on.
There it goes. We've worked with you guys in the past. We've worked with you at other projects, and we were working with you as this project was starting to be thought about. And that's the very first thing, is, well, how much is this going to cost? So looking at the budget that's been provided, that matches a very efficient building, and that's what we're proposing to give to you. The only way that budget goes higher is if the building gets bigger. There's a lot of site work and certain things that are kind of have to be done as part of the project. The real budget control is the size of the building, the efficiency of that building. So we looked at that from a budgetary standpoint, we looked at that from an Act 34 standpoint as well, because Act 34 is also going to limit how much you can spend, based on how many students are in the building. Fortunately, there's a lot of students in this building. So throughout our process, and even, you know, as this process was starting, and as you guys were looking at things, we were looking at that budget, saying, yes, this budget would be adequate for the amount of work you're talking about here, and certainly it would fit within the Act 34 limits as well. So to that, one of our biggest controls, and, you know, Mark's the guy in charge of all that, is budget control. So if you want to talk about how we're going to make sure that we stay on budget.
Right. So I'm going to get a little bit more into the nitty-gritty and how we make it efficient. So we've done a lot of buildings. We have kind of benchmarks to know what size building is appropriate. We've just recently done Avon Grove and Lower Moreland High Schools. We found 170 square foot per student is a reasonable number to make a nice building, but not an overly large building. And so those are two that have been done in the last year and a half. We make the building efficient by providing multi-use and flexible spaces that are double-used. You know, we try to keep a lot of those huge spaces as efficient as possible. We test our buildings all the way through the whole process. We check it with your budget, we check it with Act 34, and we check it against all the code restrictions that come our way. Most importantly, we communicate with the entire design team, and the owner is part of that design team. So when we come, you know, things, the design process is very dynamic. So when we come to crossroads, we'll investigate it, we'll feed you as much information as we can to make informed decisions that will be your purview. And I think we've talked a decent amount about Act 34, but yes, we have to meet Act 34. We will meet Act 34, and we'll test it often.
Yeah, throughout that process, and again, we did a little bit of that with Bain as well, as, you know, construction costs were rising and things like that. I believe Bain may be actually the last Plan Con project, you know, since the moratorium closed. That's the last one on the books in Harrisburg right now. But constantly coming back and showing you, hey, here's the design, here's the budget. You know, we're always going to make sure that we're showing that. You know, it doesn't make sense for us to show you anything that you can't afford. So as things change, and everybody says, hey, you know, maybe we make the gym a little bigger. Okay, well, if we made the gym a little bigger, now where are we cutting back on that? Because in doing that, now we're getting a building that's a little bit bigger than we had budgeted before. And those are the conversations and collaboration that we'll have with you. Did I get all three?
Change orders.
Oh, change orders. So no one likes change orders. Obviously, the messy kind of renovation projects, there's a lot of things that are considered unknowns. So within that project budget, specifically at Bain, there is a large amount of money sitting there, knowing that there are things that are going to be found when you start taking roofs away and start taking walls away. And there were quite a few things that were found. Mark can obviously attest to that.
And continue to be.
The project is still tracking on budget or under, because we budgeted those things ahead of time, and we know what those things are there. So in a new construction project, there are less unknowns, because everything is brand-new. But again, there will be budgets for things, because something will be in the site, something will come up. We'll walk through the building, and somebody will say, wouldn't maybe we should add something over here? So making sure that the budget meets your needs, and there's contingencies and adequate contingencies within that. So when we're all done, the project certainly comes in under budget, because we were aware and we know, hey, there's just going to be something. There's going to be a day where we find a rock someplace that we didn't think there was a rock. We know that that's there, so let's budget for that, and that will always be a part of our budgets.
Thank you. Lois?
Good evening. Creating inclusive, oops, start over. Creating inclusive and accessible school environments for students with diverse abilities is a priority for the district. Do you work with any consultants, not to just meet ADA requirements, but truly provide a universal access in design?
We don't work with consultants, because we know what we're doing, and we care about that a lot. Scott and I are going to talk a little bit about this, so in preparation, we were getting ready for the slides. We didn't know what order you were doing the questions, so I'm kind of going back and forth and everything. But this is our slide for this category. This is extremely important, and we look at this far more than just ADA compliant. You have to be ADA compliant, it's passing the law. But what we try to do is try to be ADA-friendly as well, because just being compliant is not good enough, especially for our students and teachers and anyone in the community that's going to be visiting this building. So we look at two ways, mobility and the sensory issues involved in those things. So on the mobility side, you're talking about kind of breaking down those physical and social barriers, making sure that everyone feels welcome. Every space that's in that building, if it's an exciting space for any child, anyone with mobility issues needs to be able to access as well. Talk about equal participation and social interaction. Everybody should feel welcome. There shouldn't feel like you have to be at a special spot just because you have a mobility issue. Every place should be open and available to those students and visitors to your building. Do you want to talk a bit about your sensory part there?
So just to step back for half a second, I look at ADA as dimensional and quantitative. When we look at inclusivity issues, we look at quality issues, and they're very, very, very different. We all have some experience with impairments. Sometimes you'll see an impairment, I think it gets a little bit up there on the slide, you see that we might have a situational impairment on driving here in the rain. That's an impairment. You may have an impairment which is temporary, and you'll hear from it, heal from it, sorry. You may have something that's permanent. We have to accommodate all of those things. Personally, I have a little bit of experience spending many months in a wheelchair and having to learn to walk again. That changed my entire perception of my career. We have to help you have that understanding too, so the things that we propose, even though they might not be the letter of the law, they'll be above the law that you'll let us do. So to go on that a little bit further, you have to understand things like this. When you're walking next to a person that's hearing impaired, and you're walking down a corridor, that corridor can't be so thin that I can't turn sideways, because if I'm hearing impaired, I need to look at Thaddeus's mouth to see his lips move, or I cannot hear him. I need to see that teacher's mouth in the front of the classroom, which has to be lit a very specific way, so you do not have shadows on their mouth, or that student cannot learn. So briefly, I look forward to having these conversations with you, so we all have an understanding of what these issues mean, because it's our mothers, our fathers, our children that we need to include and be inclusive when we design the school for you.
Could you discuss your thoughts on glass exterior walls incorporated into a building design from the standpoint of a variety of aspects, including, but not limited to daylight, energy conservations, sustainability, security, and maintenance, those costs as compared to solid exterior walls?
Sure. I'm trying to get my, there it is. Talking a little bit about safety and security. So again, something we take very, very seriously. Our firm, we have members of our firm that are SEPED certified, that's Criminal Protection through Environmental Design, that's a national organization that focuses on building safety. I'm the architectural rep on the Governor's State School Safety Committee, the Act 44 money, which is now the Act 55 money this year. I'm the architectural rep on that. So we talk quite a bit, do a lot of informational meetings on school safety. Of course, we take that very, very seriously. When you look at glass, ironically, we always say, glass look goes two ways, right? We don't want the bad guys to be able to see in, but we have to make sure that the good guys are able to monitor things that are available as well. So when we talk about glass, when we're talking about safety, we want to have a lot of glass, we want to have a lot of natural light. Scott, for revision, is a tremendous lead accredited fellow when it comes to sustainable design, and Jeff is certainly going to talk a lot about energy consumption for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. So having glass and natural light reduces our lighting load, provides all kinds of good feelings in the building, and, you know, we hear all kinds of studies about natural light. But we want to make sure that that glass is also keeping intruders out. So that glass along the first floor is considered intruder-resistant glazing, which means somebody can't get through it. We're stopping the person, we're slowing that person down. Visually, I can see through there, so if first responders come and they're able to look into that building, they can see and assess, all right, everything's fine in there, let's move on. There is a lot of reasons to have visual transparency in schools as well, once you're on the inside of that space. We want kids to have a little bit of freedom. We want to supervise them as well, because they are teenagers. So we're going to give them that supervision. We're going to say, hey, you guys can go work on that PowerPoint together in that room over there, but you're 16, 17, I better keep an eye on you as well. So that type of supervision, that's security. That glass, because it's transparent, is providing that security and supervision as well. So there's a great balance of glass in the buildings when it comes to safety, certainly when it comes to thermal energy as well. If you saw in some of the renderings that we had, there were areas where there's a lot of light coming through. Big three-story area, we had that green wall there, a lot of natural light coming through right next to that. Solid wall, interior classrooms, smaller areas, a little bit quieter and a little less natural light. So you want that variety of space, so when you're walking down that hall, say, the path, there's a lot of natural light coming in, but you also want to make sure that we're balancing that. Again, if it's just a big glass box, we're going to spend all day long heating it. So we want to make sure that that's a balance. So between Scott's expertise in sustainability, Jeff's expertise in mechanical systems, we create an energy model for the building to make sure we're balancing that as well. How should the building be oriented? Which way should, where should we have more glass? Maybe we should face glass a little bit more north than south. All of those things are valued and analyzed, so both from safety aspect as well as energy
Thank you.
Describe some of the site challenges, and what is the approach to addressing them? Specifically, what are your thoughts on the complexities of creating new entrances and driveways to the site to improve drop-off or pickup?
Well, we talked about school safety, and one of the very first things we look at is the outside of the building as well, and traffic safety. Arriving to the school and being safe is pretty important. So you want to make sure that when we're analyzing the site, the absolute number-one thing about building design, and SEPED will say that as well, an identifiable front door. Do you know where the front door is? So when we looked at the site here, this is the existing building, you want to pass that down to Terry there? We talked about the construction zone there, we talked about where the new building would be. We chose to put the building a little bit more along Hood Boulevard. We like the facade there, we like that when people drive by, they're going to see that school, and that the parking is in the back. The parking is in the site, buses come in, they're separate from the student parking. Again, high schools are unique, and the fact that you have 16, 17, and 18-year-olds driving, some of them for the first time. Uh, again, high schools are unique and the fact that you have sixteen, seventeen and eighteen year olds driving, some of them for the first time. Um, so we wanna make sure that there's a, a very visible way for them to get on the site and get back out. Uh, we don't want them mixing with, with buses. Um, and oftentimes we have teacher parking that's separated from that as well. So what we've been showing uh, here in our design is, is um, keeping the buses and the student parking, visitor parking as well, right at the front door. Um, when you come in off of um, Olds Boulevard, you, you, I can see the front door. That was the image that we had up before. I can see the front door, that big parking lot's right in front of me. I know where the front door is. Bunch of areas marked visitor. I don't have to start walking around the school and trying to find an exit door someplace to get into the building. I know where the front door is. That's, that's key. Um, one of the challenges that you have now, other than, you know, two buildings that don't connect, is there's also parking all over the place. And then the path itself is, is uh, not only a walking path, but a vehicle path as well. So you're mixing um, pedestrians and students. Well, one of the advantages we feel uh, with this site is that we can kind of shut down what we were talking about as an, as the island and really have all of that vehicular circulation going around the outside, the building and the stadium area. So we've isolated that so that if you're driving around, you wanna go to the athletic side, great, get in your car, drive around the stadium and come back. Because what that creates then is this island. Anyone that gets out of their car and comes onto the site, if you're in the building, if you're going to the stadium, there's no cars. There's no buses. Everybody's on the outside of that. Once I come to the curb and get dropped off, walk on a sidewalk. If I'm going from the, the front door of the building to the athletic side of the building or to the stadium, um, I'm not being, uh, I'm not in the way of traffic. So we, we made a very conscious effort to place the building where it was, connect the athletic area to where the stadium is as well and, and make sure that all of our traffic is going around the perimeter of the site. Um, so that we don't have any, anything that's, that's cutting through the middle of the site or anything like that for the sole reason of, of traffic and safety. Did I answer your question?
How do you embed safety and security into your school designs while maintaining access to spaces and a welcoming environment?
Yeah, so again, um, this is where glass and tall spaces and transparency comes into play. We want this school to look beautiful. We want this school to, where, where students come in and feel uplifted. Um, when we worked on uh, uh, Lower Moreland, which is another school that just opened, we'd invite you guys to go see that as a high school. We brought teachers and students in and said, how should this building feel when you first walk in? And we had a whole whiteboard thing where people were talking about welcoming. Well, I wanna be inspired. I wanna be wowed. I wanna feel nurtured. Um, so all of those kind of adjectives were brought to the, um, brought to us and we said, alright, well, how do we design that? How do we design something that feels safe, um, but also inspires and, and creates um, a feeling of, especially here, a feeling of pride. If you remember in our design, when you first come in, uh, the history wall's right there, the honor wall's right there, the hall of fame is right there. We had an area for um, artifacts and things like that. Uh, one gentleman had mentioned tonight about, you know, seventy-five years of history. Well, let's show some of that off. So right from the front door, having that feeling of safety, we're coming through uh, right uh, at a monitored area where, where administration is. Um, I'm coming through those doors. I'm in a space that's nice, is showing off some of the history. Uh, I'm coming right to, in our design, we had that, that pathway that went right through the middle of the building. I'm easily connecting to that. I understand where everything is. Um, so the welcoming feeling of that when I first come in is very, very important. Now, when the bell rings and all the doors are locked, I'm a visitor and as we just mentioned about uh, visitor parking, I come to the building. I know where the front door is. I go right to it and that door's locked. And right next to it is a door that says visitor. I go, alright, that's where I'm going, cuz it's all very well marked. Uh, hit the button, everybody can see me. I come in, there's a locked vestibule. Um, might scan my license, have another area of security. If I'm allowed into the building, I'm allowed into admin, not the lobby yet, um, into admin, so you're checked again. So there are multiple levels and layers of security for any visitor coming on uh, into that building once school is in session. Um, so there's a lot of things that you'll see, some things that are, are a little hidden, we'll say. Um, one of the things I wanted to mention uh, for this slide and, and one of the things that I learned a lot about in that committee with the governor uh, uh, committee, um, was Pennsylvania kind of broke, um, uh, school safety down to three categories. The built environment, the school, makes some sense. Um, policy and training, uh, and behavioral health. Policy and training is really important. We do um, kind of a, uh, an end user meeting when the building is completed with teachers uh, to walk them through and say, hey, you might not know this, but this is a secure door and here's why this is here and here's why it's like this. Uh, here's why there's no door handle on the outside of it, because we don't want you to prop that door open. If you leave, you have to come back in here and here's the door where your fob will work. So you don't have to go that far. You might have to go a little bit further uh, than you would if you propped that door open, but we're not propping doors open because that's, again, one of those security one-on-one issues. Um, so we sit with your teachers before the building is designed or while the building's being designed and certainly afterwards as well to help you um, create the training and policy of, it's kind of like a user manual uh, for a new car or something. Alright, well, how do I use this? What are these buttons for? Um, well, we, we sit and we train and, and work with your staff uh, once the building's completed. And then behavioral health as well. Um, Laura talked a lot about um, biophilic design, um, just the idea of being able to, to walk through the building and feel um, a connection to nature. There was a, a young lady at, when we did the, the walkthrough named Tara, um, who talked about the path. And she was like, I like the path. It's a nice time to kind of disconnect from everything. And we're like, okay, except it's a fifteen minute walk outside in the rain. Um, she's like, yeah, other than that, I, you know, but I, I like that connection to nature. I like that break in my day, that behavioral um, calmness that occurs in that. Okay, so let's, let's not look at the path as that path, the path you have now, which is a road, which has cars on it. Um, the path is an idea. Um, it's a concept in the building where we can have linkage to nature, linkages to courtyards. Uh, uh, green attributes in the building. The materials that we'll, that we'll choose uh, can have some texture and things like that to nature as well. So the behavior uh, and mindset of the materials and, and the environment that we create inside, again, goes to uh, um, uh, behavioral health, which is a key component to, to school security as well.
So, we have an overall vision of where we'd like to end, but sometimes you have to do it in parts. So, because you can't afford everything at the get-go. Um, what are your initial thoughts and suggestions on possible alternate bid items that may be considered and why?
Yeah, so, um, again, as we mentioned before, the, the biggest cost control is the size of the building. Um, so oftentimes there are things that can be alternates as far as parts of the building. We showed how, um, you could actually have future classrooms uh, in the future as part of our design as well. Um, maybe there's some that are alternates for day one. Uh, hey, these would be some spaces that are really nice. They might not be needed on day one. We'd like them. Um, so let's design that where it can be what's called a deduct alternate. So if the bids come in and it's a little bit more than we wanna spend, we say, eh, you know what, we need this, this is a good thing, but maybe we can take that one room off or that one space off. That really hurts, we really wanted it. Um, but that's a big way to um, create large uh, amounts of, of large um, uh, monetary amount of, of alternates. Other ways are things like finishes inside the building. This is a big building. Um, terrazzo can be a beautiful floor. It's also very expensive. So are there a lot of other ways to, to integrate that? Do we use terrazzo in some high uh, traffic areas and then maybe use uh, another very durable material? Again, um, uh, working with Laura in our interior design department, durability is the number one quality that we look to when we're looking at choosing a material. Um, gotta make it last. It's gonna be here for a long time and you're gonna have a bunch of teenagers walking through it, so uh, they're not always gentle. Um, so, um, we'll make sure that those quantity, qualities are there, a durable material. Um, but we'll provide three options and there's cost differences to those and we can share that and say, this one's great, but this one's good too and there's a five hundred thousand dollar savings. Maybe we wanna take that. Um, so on bid day, when, when bids come in, you kind of get a base bid. Here's what the base cost. And then here's a bunch of things that we can add and here's maybe a few things that we can take away. Um, that's all part of the communication, uh, that Thaddeus had talked about, the community events and things like that. We're gonna show you, this is the base bid. This is what this budget looks at. There's a, there's two things over here that are above that, but we're gonna bid it. Let's see if that comes in. Maybe we get, you know, some hungry contractors and we can get a little bit more than we had originally planned. And here's three or four things that we'd really like, but you know what, if, if the budget comes in high, we can, we can pull back on. Um, so that's uh, very much at the forefront of every project that we work on. Um, making sure that we have those, those fail safes. Good question.
Thank you.
What if any consideration have you given to the, given to the long-term maintenance and operation efficiencies to the building and to the various building systems? And can you cite examples like HVAC, electrical, that type stuff?
Yeah, again, I'm gonna pass this to, to Jeff, but um, or you can pass it to Jeff. Um, uh, durability and um, energy efficiency is, is very, very important. We're, there's, you know, there's always the Cadillac versions of things, but there's um, also, we don't wanna cheapen on things, especially HVAC systems. Um, those are things that, that need to be robust. This is a very large building. This isn't, you know, the air conditioning condenser you buy for your home. Um, it needs to be robust. It's a very expensive system. Um, but we also wanna make sure that it's, it's uh, energy efficient, um, and it's gonna last for a very long time.
Yeah, I think it was, as part of our process when it comes to the HVAC systems, we usually come up with about four systems that would be viable and modern for a building like this. Um, and then like the architects, how they'll sit, sorry, I'm from the engineer, not the architect, so. As the architects will listen to your concerns as they design the building, we do the same thing with the maintenance staff and kind of put that into our study as well, so we're not just looking at cost, we're looking at ease of maintenance, um, and kind of having a good understanding for the district's experience, what systems they like, what they don't like, what's worked for them. Um, I know some of you have already sat through one of those with us at BAME and they're very exciting, but um, yeah, so we kind of, we like to get that feedback from the district and pull that into our design as well.
Do you wanna talk a little bit about um, teaming with that as well and energy efficiency?
Uh, yeah, sure. We, it's really our job to help you find the most cost-effective, meaningful solutions in regards to anything uh, dealing with sustainability, but specifically in the energy of the building. We know we have to design a building that's going to be reasonable or really good, meaning less expensive to maintain. And we really have to engage with the operations and maintenance side so they know how to operate it and maintain it correctly, so it will last for years and years and years. And there's a little bit of a filtering process that we may talk about a little bit later that we go through to make sure that that gets done.
Yeah, we're, we're really, did you turn this on? We're really. We're really, there it is. We're really excited to have uh, Scott and his team as part of our, our core team. Um, oftentimes, uh, Scott's team comes on when, when people are looking for lead accreditation and things like that and that's always a, a nice process, but um, regardless of, of lead accreditation or not, Scott and, and revision are part of our core team. Um, so when we have those conversations, it's us, it's his team, it's Jeff and his team. Um, cuz we're, we're gonna look at a, a lot of uh, different opportunities here to make sure we're, we're helping you select the right uh, system.
Hello, good evening.
Oh, yeah.
Um, you talked about involving the community during the process multiple times, so my question is around your approach to being flexible, um, but also your approach to decision-making. For example, right, so you have three zones and let's say as part of the feedback, it came out with like the entrance, what if you move it to the, the middle section, like the academic section? How do you approach things like that?
Say absolutely, let's, let's try. Um, I, I, I would be more than happy for you to hire us and say, we, we love your team, we hated your design, start over. I go, okay, let's start over. Um, this is, this is option one. Um, there are dozens of options for us to take a look at. Um, let's absolutely look at that. We, we thought, um, we were talking a little bit at the, at the first interview about it's a big building, how do we kind of relate to that? So we felt, you know, having the, the academic core in the middle where kids kinda spend most of their day made the most sense and kind of split it to the side. Um, but if we wanna enter that core or have that, you know, that connection in the front as day one, let's take a look at that. Um, when the building's at, at this level, um, it's fun. That's the fun part. Uh, we get to draw and, and design things. We actually did, um, uh, a, a school recently where we would show something, they're like, oh, well, that's already there. I'm like, no, it's not there. And so we would start every meeting with a picture of the site and there was no building on it. I was like, there's no building there yet. We can still make changes, you know? What would you like to see? Um, just cuz we're showing it on a model and it looks, you know, uh, pretty cool in the videos, we can change those things. So let's do that. We absolutely wanna engage those things. We absolutely wanna come back and talk about should left be on the right side? Should we have two stories or three stories? Uh, and look at those things. We, we embrace that. Um, it's something that very early on, um, uh, we would wanna be a part of. And, and to your earlier point, every time we do that, we're coming back with the budget. Um, every time we come back with that, we go, hey, that was a good idea. Yeah, we're still within the budget. Um, one of the nice things about three-story buildings or compact buildings, there's less site work. Um, there's less roof. Um, so when we stack a building, um, not that we would wanna go more than three floors, but the, the smaller the footprint, the less cost. If things start to spread out a little bit, okay, we can look at that, but now we're starting to have a little bit more roof product. We're having a little bit more site work involved. Um, a, a lot more um, uh, stormwater management that Terry, Terry's our civil engineer. Um, uh, uh, that would, he would have to, to handle as well. So all of those things we are, are ready to take a look at and happy to explain the financial implications of each as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. You've answered all of our questions. Um, I know that you had prepared slides, so if there is any further information that you'd like to share with us that we haven't touched on with our questions, we'd be happy. We've got time in your allotted hour to.
We can talk all night. For, for us and our team, we were just really excited to be part of this process. We kind of saw this as a and felt like, you know, alright, you're already hired, let's, let's start, let's, let's look at those things. But this feedback is what we really kind of um, drive ourselves from, from. We wanna hear those things. We wanna have somebody say, hey, what happens if the front door's on the other side? Um, I think for, for me, this, this, um, this building and there's, there's so much pride in, in the district and you know, uh, we can't get Thaddeus to shut up when we start asking him questions about, you know, his experience in high school. Um, this is the kind of community that we wanna work with. Um, bringing that pride to the building. Um, having people say, yeah, try this, try this, try this. Let's add more things, let's add more things. Um, we want that type of feedback, we want that type of energy. We would certainly feed off that as well. Um, so I think things about um, uh, uh, sustainability. Um, you know, we really enjoyed reading the, the Pensbury Green uh, paper that you put together. And Scott, if you wanna, you wanna talk on that in a minute as well. Um, you know, sometimes we have to get people engaged into that. Like, hey, what do you think? And they go, okay, fine. Well, no, what do you think? Like, let's, let's get engaged with that. You guys are coming to us already fired up with all kinds of committees. Um, you're already devoted to uh, sustainability. So all of those things we saw um, kind of drove us and gave us a lot of energy and that's something that we're really hopeful to, uh, uh, to engage with you. Do you wanna talk a little bit about the?
I'll just, I'm gonna talk a little bit uh, in regards to sustainability, but it really goes to the key thing for sustainability and also the key thing for the design team, this design team. I've worked with these guys for twenty-two years now. It's about getting a good process in place. It's about getting a good process of them listening and us listening to you and demonstrating with sustainability or, or other design options, what the range of good possibilities are. And then run everything, all the good ideas through a funnel to understand which ones are the best ones to pursue, the ones that are cost-effective, demonstrative of what you're trying to do, can be maintained, et cetera, et cetera. So the, the, you know, really the process is key. And then in regards to that process, we do have to figure out where you wanna be in regards to sustainability. Do you wanna be on the uh, the lighter, green, off-the-shelf version of sustainability? Or do you wanna push a little bit harder so you can make sure that your energy bill is half? Do you wanna go all the way to being restorative? I don't know. But we have to engage you in those conversations, put a good process in place and figure out where you wanna be on that range of sustainability or other design options. And then running you through what I'm gonna refer to as that filter, come out of the end with what good looks like for a school for you. Whether it's sustainable design stuff, whether it's uh, regular design stuff, safety, safety and security. I could probably go on for like two hours on sustainability.
We talked about uh, the filter. We, we've talked to groups together about the ladder. You know, how far up the ladder do we wanna go when it comes to sustainability? Um, what I always like, uh, again, is, is, is interacting with the kids about that as well. Um, you know, what do they see? What do they um, interact with? Um, some things in your report like waste reduction. I mean, how simple is that? But there's, there's ways of doing that, that's not just a, a trash bin in the corner. Um, so if they're gonna engage that, this is the time to get them excited about it uh, before they go, you know, off to, to their lives and, and they'll have that embedded in their head about um, why it's important to recycle, why it's important to maybe separate our trash a little bit, maybe consume a little less. Um, maybe have uh, uh, you know, sustainable attributes in their, in their brains when they're, when they're walking through their schools. So now's the time to teach that. Um, it's a, it's a great opportunity with your students over the next year while we're designing that. But we certainly, once when we leave and the new building is there, for that building to be a teaching tool uh, for those kids and for your teachers to be able to point to something good. for those kids and for your teachers to be able to point to something good. Hey, look at this. This is something that we're doing well here. Let's, let's have a competition with the with the second floor on energy consumption this week. And, you know, have those kind of fun things where the building itself now is advocating for good design and part of the lesson process.
And even if you can make it part of your curriculum, to have the students measure waste in a set of cans and then report out that this student group did this well, this student group did that well. Those are the things that can provide, where the building can help you with your educational process.
Well, do you guys have any other additional questions? Or, you know, we could, we could ask you guys questions as well. I mean, how have you seen this process? What did you take from some of the other groups? And what did you take from our design that you you thought was good? Some comments, you know, coming back of things you might already start changing? Or, you know, what are you guys looking for as as you're kind of really concluding, I guess, as you mentioned earlier, this this process? Are we allowed to do extra questions or, sorry, if I'm breaking rules?
I don't want to break the rules either. That's my message.
What do you think? Do we have time?
We have time. Let's just make sure the next person goes.
Yeah, we need to be sure that the next person.
Well, yeah. Okay. You continue and I'll formulate the same question for both of you. Okay, just give me a minute.
No, no problem. Again, I would just want to be thankful again for the process of all of this. I know you're chomping at the bit to talk a little bit more about some of this stuff that you did. I know we've had a lot of good conversations about some things that you enjoyed when you were in high school that, you know, could certainly be implemented here.
So I pretty much was in everything at Pensbury. I was in the play, I was in chamber choir, I was in chorus, I was in soccer, I was wrestling, I was in cross country, I was in track. Now beyond that, my family is very large and we've been going to Pensbury School Districts in 40 plus years now. My brother graduated in 85. So he actually went to school with Troy Vincent. But as to say is that it's, it's, you know, we have this this large history of, you know, shared family memories of, you know, my brother always talking about going to Medell Bear and stuff like that. And now it's not that. But, you know, I have the opportunity now to possibly change that and make it, you know, maybe we do have a Medell Bear something. You know, I believe that was named after the superintendent. But, but yeah, it's, you know, having all that knowledge and then being able to speak with my community again and be able to imbue that in this new building would be obviously a career high at my point. But yeah, so please let me design your school. But, but yeah.
It gets better. It's not just one project and then you're done.
Yeah, I know, I know.
You got a lot of good guys.
But, but yeah, I mean, it's, you know, along with that is a lot of the things that, you know, the dark history of Pensbury, stuff that stuff that, some bad things that happened here, like the runaway bus and stuff like that. You know, my sister was there that day. She was at, she was in front of East. So things like that, I can make sure never happen again. And, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, nothing like that ever happens again. So as I say, we have our site design and it's pretty well developed. You know, we, we're staying on Old Boulevard and Queen Anne, kind of staying away from Hood Boulevard and, and I'm blanking on the road name, but New Falls. And keeping away from that busy intersection. A lot of my friends actually got in accidents there first thing in the morning. You know, didn't have their coffee or whatever. But, you know, again, having us keep away from from those busy intersections and, you know, maybe, you know, keeping it in a safer space like that, but.
Yeah, so that's, thanks. I mean, having that kind of background knowledge, things like that is certainly helpful. So we don't have to go far to to hear from the community.
Exactly.
When we have those type of comments. So you have your question there?
That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. Really appreciate your time and certainly hope to continue these types of conversations and the collaboration with you and your team.
Thank you. Thank you for all that you've put into the the concept so far. We really appreciate your time.
No, thank you very much. We've had had a lot of fun. Appreciate it.
We're going to take a five minute recess and allow for the changing of the of the team. Coming back to order. Thank you very much for coming back tonight as a finalist. We are looking forward to hearing from you this evening. We have a series of nine questions. Each board member is going to ask one. They're related to the topics that that we sent to you. So the first one comes from me. I'm Joanna Stier. I'm the president of the school board. Pensbury is a very proud community. How do you involve staff, students and interested community members in the design process to ensure that this, your school design promotes that sense of community that is Pensbury?
Thank you for the invitation back. Anxious to talk further. So we'll share a little bit about our stakeholder process of collaboration. I think one of the things that we uniquely bring to the table is outside of the direct design process, there is a very critical aspect of the project to share information at critical stages of the project by engaging staff as well as students and the community. And we do that through a series of charrettes, very much like this setting would be, where as the architects, we would be presenting perhaps a particular phase of the design of the project for 15 or 20 minute presentation to share the progress, talk about how we are collecting information, all the different departments that we're meeting with, how we're organizing that information, and then share the status of the project. And then one of the reasons why our whole team is here is then we would break into separate groups. Perhaps you have a group that's interested in the building design itself. You might have a group that's interested in the cost and the budgeting of the project. You might have a group that's interested in the site design. So all the professionals sitting at the table here would break into those corresponding groups. So we could have that collaboration at that level to hear what people are asking, making sure the information about the project is being conveyed correctly and sharing those ideas. And then we collect that information and bring it back to the board to discuss recommendations for how we would proceed with making changes to the project or adjusting the project and and the scope and moving forward.
Thank you. So as I said, there are nine of us. And if you estimate about five minutes per question, if you take less, that's fine. And you can give us more information at the end if you have something that we haven't covered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stier. In your experience, first of all, this is a three part question. I'm going to read it in its entirety and I'll repeat the parts if you need it. In your experience, do you believe the budget scope and timelines outlined in the request for proposal are reasonable? What is your record for your project staying on time and on budget? And can you explain how you will work to avoid or minimize change orders?
Sure. So I'll respond to the first portion and then anyone else want to join. We spent a significant amount of time looking over the proposals that you've shared. And I think the evidence of that is in the design that we presented and the model that we've constructed. So we took a very deep dive into the program and the design process, which translated to our understanding of the budget, which we also produced and submitted with our proposal. With the information provided by Dewey and the proposal, again, I think our design translates to the level of detail. It's a highly refined plan. It's not conceptualized. We've given thought to every aspect of the program. Now, we did make assumptions. We haven't met with all of you and that's not the design process. But we wanted to demonstrate our ability to see what the questions were, show you our ability to provide a design that meets the program and also the schedule. There was a lot of information provided in the schedule, excuse me, the RFP for the schedule that is very reasonable. We have worked on projects of this size and we would have identified something that if we felt it was not achievable, but the schedule as presented is very achievable. There are milestones that we all have to hit collectively, the group of the design team sitting here and the board in order to make those schedules. But we believe that is, that is very reasonable. In terms of the budget, I think one of the things that you should ask yourself in the architect selection is how does the architect philosophically look at a budget of this magnitude? And I think one of the things that we spoke to last time was we have a very unique philosophy of understanding all the unique parts of the budget while maintaining a holistic picture of the entire budget. I think some architects tend to see a budget as an opportunity to design. We see a board's approval of a budget is those are our marching orders that we design to the board approved budget and not the other way around. We have a unique aspect of looking into each and managing every one of those parts. Again, a project this size, something very small, $1 per square foot is a half a million dollars. And we get that. And I think this slide translates to understanding the relationship of all of those individual parts and how they maneuver one another, influence one another. Establishing an educational program early on might seem obvious, but if the program directly translates to square footage and square footage translates directly to cost. So one of the things that we would help to ensure in managing the budget and the schedule is developing an agreed upon educational program early on in the process. That's very, very critical. Additionally, getting input from the municipalities having jurisdiction early in the process. Projects of this magnitude require consensus and we need to understand all the influencing agencies that will impart direction and mandates on this project that they are thought of and planned for early in the process. We're also very big proponents of developing alternates to help manage the budget. Those alternates will give the board flexibility on bid day to control the cost of the project. That is very critical in terms of the ability for a project to move forward and that those alternates are well developed and planned and part of the process from the beginning, not at the end. A lot of times alternates come in the very latter phase of the project. I think the third part of your question was change orders. One of the things that Crabtree Robon Associates has gone to almost now acting 15 years was the implementation before many other architects were using Revit to develop the design concepts for our projects. We have a great track record with references that we would encourage you to talk to of completed projects to illustrate on new construction to aim for a percentage of less than 1%. That requires a lot of effort on the construction manager's part. And we understand that that collaboration, drawing review through each phase of the project and then making thoughtful changes to the drawings that we all agree upon and that we all understand so that they're incorporated into the project. I think another unique aspect of any architect selection should be their track record. What have architects actually demonstrated over the years? One of the things that we're particularly proud of in terms of cost on this chart, the Department of Education in the mid to late 90s started tracking all new construction throughout the entire state of Pennsylvania. It was referred to as Report 30. We took great pride in that because many, many years, and you'll see the orange dots represent Crabtree Robon Associates projects, while the green line represents the state average in terms of dollars per square foot. So in public education, the thing that is unique about our firm is that we understand you have one shot to do this project and you need to fulfill the entire program. The cost per square foot and the architect's ability to cost effectively design the project is the most important decision. And over 20 years, Crabtree Robon Associates has had, in some cases, the first, the second, and in a few years, the first, second and third most cost effective schools, whether elementary, middle school or high schools in the state of Pennsylvania. So it isn't something that happens by chance. We understand building technologies. We understand how the drawings are developed. We work very well with the construction management team to collaboratively produce these documents that yield that effect and that result consistently. Again, I think you'll see a reoccurring theme. The one unique thing that our firm does is design to the board's approved budget. We're very conscious of the decisions that we make and the recommendations that we give you, that they are all underlined by one fact, and that is that we're doing things that meet the budget. The last slide, I think, just in terms of talking about alternates more specifically, being familiar with the PlanCom process, which is now, I think, maybe in its 10th year of moratorium. While we have been well versed in this, designing a project and understanding how alternates are developed so that you know when you're making decisions to accept something or you may have to take something out that perhaps could be added later, that that is competitively bid. And what we're showing is our example of State College High School where we had approximately a 15 to 20% variance in cost that gave enough flexibility in the cost of the project. So on, after the bids were received, the board could make some decisions about things that they wanted to include the project, but it protected the base bid project and it would allow it to move forward. Those things cannot be done at the end of the design development or construction document phase. They have to be thoughtfully developed through every step of the project. We don't want to propose an alternate that you as a board don't want to accept. Our time should be invested in developing the alternates that make sense. And hopefully we receive favorable numbers that you can select all the things that influence your project and you remain in control of the budget of the project.
Thank you.
Good evening. Creating an inclusive and accessible school environment for students with diverse abilities is a priority for the district. Do you work with any consultants to not just meet ADA requirements, but provide truly universal access in design?
Yes, good evening again. So as a firm, we do have a master code professional on staff that fully checks our drawings during not just the end, but through every stage of design during the project. So based on that, we have a deep bench of just people that understand code and ADA. It's not just the master code. There's a lot of training that occurs in their office. So we bring a sense of just professionalism to and knowledge for ADA and universal design as well. And as part of ADA, our philosophy has always been, so ADA has a lot of construction design standards. We all understand that. Most of it is very technical and detailed, include both the building and site, for example. And a few, a few examples for the site would be just making sure we have ramps to move upstairs, level walkways, parking that's close to the building. Building examples would be access to elevator, door hardware to ensure ADA clearance and technical details like that. There's a lot of it during the building and we understand that. But but our firm philosophy has been not to just be 100% compliant, but to be beyond 100% compliant. So, so what does that really mean? So for example, per ADA, the code, it indicates that 60% of your main entrances need to be accessible. We as a firm believe 100% of your main entrances need to be accessible. So that's just one example. We feel like that impacts your students and how they enter the school and feeling inclusive in design as well. But I also think beyond the technical details of ADA, which is a lot, and we understand that, really the main question that we're asking in terms of ADA and inclusionary design is really, how does that impact the students and staff and faculty in your school? And our core philosophy is that every student, staff and faculty should feel like a part of your Pensbury community. So what does that mean exactly? So for example, going back to accessible entrances, ADA only indicates, say, the entrances two feet above grade. You need about 24 feet of ramp. ADA only states you do need a ramp. ADA only states you do need a ramp. However, in our philosophy, we understand we play out a scenario where someone is on a wheelchair coming in with some friends at school. We don't want that student to veer off 20 feet to find a ramp. We want them to feel like they can walk up to the school with their friends. So that ramp needs to be designed as part of that flow. Again, this idea that this school needs to be welcoming and inclusionary to the students and staff and faculty members in there. We do have another diagram on the screen. From far away, there's a lot of dots, but the building itself is also designed as being incredibly inclusionary. We understand that students, they learn differently, and also students have different social dynamics. So our building is designed, if you can see the purple, again, it's a little bit hard to read, but the purple that are scattered throughout the building are calming spaces. These are for students that have smaller spaces, that want to get away from a crowd and have just a closer space, be able to study and read a book and things like that. We also have learning support spaces scattered throughout the building. Either ways, that students can get help from teachers or be able to partner with other teachers in their lessons and homework and things like that. Whatever that lesson may be, it's designed to accommodate that. The third also is the different scales of learning, which is indicated in blue. What that means is the school is designed to have many different types of classroom sizes, open classroom sizes. They would be from group sizes to full classroom to maybe two or three. Again, providing spaces and abilities for students who are more comfortable in different educational and social settings to really learn together. And last is ensuring that all our students have access to toilets. They're spread out through the building. They're not just at one location. And our toilet design, we've got many different kinds of them, and we certainly can design it to align with the district's standards. And finally, while it's hard to read on the screen, the five bubbles on the screen indicates our core values. I would like to bring attention to the first one, which says, "People are at the heart of the design process." And that's how we feel about our school design and how inclusionary we are in the way we design together as a whole.
Could you discuss your thoughts on glass exterior walls incorporated into a building designed from the standpoint of a variety of aspects, including but not limited to daylight, energy, conservation, sustainability, security, and maintenance costs as compared to solid exterior walls?
Well, that has a couple facets to it in that question.
Just a few.
No pun intended. I think the amount of glass in the building and the tie for sustainability is sort of stepping back and realizing that when you're designing a school, there's no one clear answer. And just like the question earlier about bringing the community in to be part of your project, you can approach sustainability or daylighting or safety and security from different approaches. And so you can remove all the glass in a building, and you're going to increase the R-value in the building. But then you're negatively going to affect the impact of the quality of the students or the space for the student having access to natural daylights and views to the exterior. So you need to continually be balancing that. One thing that we do very often in our design is really focused attention to where the glazing occurs. So what you see on the screen is this is Soulis Coen Elementary School for School District of Philadelphia, 20 miles away, very close to here. Looks like a lot of glass at first. On the left is the cafeteria. You have the main entrance, but then beyond it is the two-story classroom wing. While it looks like a lot of glass in that rendering, less than 40% of the building is glass, with the rest of the building being masonry with a high R-value thermal envelope and air bearer system. So it's sort of balancing of where do you focus the attention? Also with safety and security, the reason we do focus on areas like the cafeteria, main entrances, we embed crime prevention through environmental design in our buildings. So national principles of as somebody walks up to the building, that there are clear lines of sight, somebody approaching, they're able to be seen by the administration and the main office, that you're not just looking through a camera. If somebody's in a cafeteria, vice versa, you can also have clear views. Where do people egress away from the building? So it's that continual balance between the different aspects of energy efficiency, views, safety, and security as you put together a full building design.
Describe some of the site challenges and what is the approach to addressing them. Specifically, what are your thoughts on the complexities of creating new entrances and driveways to the site to improve drop-off and pickup?
So on the screen, we had an aerial drone footage done to understand your school, your current school, and how that works. We were able to really investigate some of the movements of your traffic, your bus loop, the combination of how your bus interacts with your parent drop-off. There's really no distinction between some of the circulation spaces. And the main thing for that is it's a safety issue as well, with people crossing each other on campus. Also understanding that students were parking off the main road. They really should be parking on campus. So based on early investigations, we understood that. So the core challenges of the existing campus, and while going down to only one building, a main building, we wanted to consolidate all your parking. So Leah, if you wouldn't mind, please, thank you. So based on our understanding of that, we did create a site organizational diagram. What this does is this is a diagram that shows some of our core elements of why we laid this site out. So some of the challenges, we're also understanding your existing buildings that were there that need to be in operation while this proposed building would be under construction. We wanted to be able to maintain that path as well, understanding that stadium and the plant turf. So based on our analysis, we understood that the building had to face Hood Boulevard. It's one of the major sort of decisions we made as a team, that had to face that state road. So based on that, understanding that the arrows shown there, the green, blue, and the yellow are three distinct traffic patterns. So clearly off the bat, we can see that they are separated. So we were trying to overcome the challenge of just cross, again, cross-vehicle traffic, pedestrians crossing each other, and really creating that separation within that. And that as well, we wanted to, with that purple circles, are indicating that we wanted to create the entry points to those separated circulation across the site instead of being shared at one. That way, we can alleviate the burden of all your traffic on the residential neighborhoods. It really sort of diversify that across the site. Also understanding there's a transportation center. We wanted to link that directly with the bus loop as an assumption, and certainly on operation use, how that would work. So based on all those, the combination of that site design, we wanted to really create, just stay consolidated and safe campus for the students, faculty, and staff. But we can't talk about parking without talking about the associated pedestrian networks and landscaping and site furniture. When we design a building, we design it with the site holistically to really overcome the site challenges. So our site plan that is rendered on the screen shows really the overlay of landscaping. We do not want a large parking lot in front of your building. We need to break that parking lot up to create a sense of entry, a center of place for your students, a lot of trees, site furniture, to be able, for the students to be able to break away, and just create a campus, again, a place without a lot of blacktop. There's a lot of parking that was in the program, identified in the program. We're trying to reduce the impact visibly and how students experience that as well. But it is also, it is important for us to locate the parking and drop-ups as much to be as close to the entrance as possible so that a student is not walking from way back in the site towards the main entrance.
And you'll see in the video earlier, if you get a chance to go back to that, you'll see when the drop-off traffic on the east side starts to create a big backup, and I'm sure everyone's aware of that. But our design for the drop-off loop provides significant queuing so that that queuing would happen on-site and not back up into Hood Boulevard and see just a domino effect all the way down with traffic and safety, people getting impatient. So what the, sort of the distributed parking also provides at the drive-aisles is emergency apparatus access to really all facades of the building by surrounding it and breaking that up. We eliminated seven curb cuts in total with the design. We did add one new one on Hood Boulevard, but we think the signals on Hood Boulevard can be adapted, timed, and programmed, or even physically connected fiber-optically to work together to create the gaps for that drop-off lane that you see in the rendering.
This diagram briefly shows just our proposed phasing plan. Again, challenges with construction, understanding that we needed to keep, we need to keep the existing buildings in operation with minimal impact. Because we designed the building with such a compact footprint, we're able to really create construction fencing with dedicated construction entrances to the construction site, really without much impact to the daily operation and education of the school district. This diagram is a way for us to show you really how consolidated that phasing plan can be.
All right. How do you embed safety and security into your school designs while maintaining access to spaces in a welcoming environment?
So I'm going to say 2010, 2013. We've all seen what's been in the news, most notably the last 20, 30 years. But we had stepped back a little bit and tried not to be reactionary. And was there a national standard that we could embed into our design and to each and every school design for our projects? And what we found was working with the National Center of Crime Prevention with the principles of SIPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. We weren't looking for, okay, we're going to have a security vestibule. We're going to have bulletproof glass. We didn't, whether it's sustainability or safety and security, we always try to look at more of a holistic approach. And what we found with SIPTED was not just, not only a published standard that we could utilize for different scenarios, but probably most importantly, our staff was training alongside first responders. So we were going down to South Carolina and sitting in class for two to three weeks as well as real-world scenarios with law enforcement, with EMS services, with fire, and how would you deal with an event occurring in a building? And what are the different perspectives that those groups have? For instance, you might have, we were thinking of one session that we had where we brought first responders together down in Maryland, and the police chief meant very well, and he was concerned with an active shooter scenario. But very quickly, what we had discussions was, well, if a fire occurs at the building, how is the apparatus going to get up to the front door? Or, you know, more likely, how are we going to bring an ambulance up to bring a student or a staff member away from? The instances that have happened more often. And so how do we look at those instances and then bring the different groups together so that they can understand each other and not just be reactionary to something that we see on national news? An example is what you see very often on national news is really a scenario that's going to happen to a student, depending on different studies, one in a million chance or one in 10 million chance. That's the same chance of being struck by lightning. None of us run out into field during a lightning storm. You got to plan for it. But what should you really be focusing as much or more is the fact that 40% to 60% of students will be bullied during their career. So what we look at is very clear lines of sight, natural surveillance to the buildings, whether it is a main entrance, somebody coming up to the building. Are there clear lines of sights strategic into restrooms, locations where you're not, you still have the privacy, but you're able to monitor so that fights aren't breaking out in areas that staff aren't monitoring? Do you have views not only into the educational spaces, the classrooms, but do you have them in the hallways? Do you have, in a building like this, you're talking a half a million square feet, you have a 400, 600-foot-long corridor? Are students picking on students going down the corridor during the day because they're not in educational space between classes? Strategically putting faculty workrooms on that main street so that there's eyes on the street, things of that nature? So trying to embed different components of SIPTED into the building and then have that holistic discussion of what's appropriate in your community for your building. Because what occurs, whether it's in South Carolina, Maryland, Pittsburgh, Philadelphia, is different from community to community, so, and bringing those different groups together.
So when you start a project of this size, it's not always possible to address every desired component at the same time. What are your thoughts or suggestions on possible alternate bid items that may be considered? And why would you suggest those?
So this approach that I mentioned earlier about designing to the budget, when we go through the programming exercise and we're getting input from all the stakeholders, we're going to see things fairly early in the process that might give us concern about the budget. Our approach is to try to figure out a design concept that they could still be included and bid, but if the board chooses not to accept something, I'll use a construction arena, which is something that we've developed on many projects. You may have your vocational programs that'll share, a shared lay-down area for construction materials for kids to collaborate and build projects together. All the program spaces are inclusive of the project, but to have an arena exterior to the building where those materials are covered, they're protected, and they're secure is an additional cost. There's some additional construction, lighting, security cameras, and so forth. But the program can function without that. It's an enhancement. So part of the early programming process is to find out what aspects of the program are critical to you that we understand that early. So they're developed in the core of the facility. You heard Arif talking about our core philosophy and how the building is designed. You can see from the level of thought that we put into the current design, we've given quite a bit of thought about all those things from security to program, how the building would be expanded. We would have those discussions early on to make suggestions to you. That's very much our responsibility as the architect, to bring recommendations to the board, things that we've heard perhaps through a stakeholder meeting or faculty and staff that might give us concern about the budget. And rather than say, "We don't think that can be accommodated," come up with a design that we could bid it competitively so you get the best possible number to obtain that program piece. But yet you can still make decisions after bids are received. And they're hard decisions sometimes to decide what can go forward or what might not go forward, or what something could be added in the future or expanded at a later date. Anybody want to add anything?
The only thing I would add is from a material aspect. You know, for us to design a luxury vinyl floor or a terrazzo floor, it's the same cost for us to do that. But terrazzo has a cost of $25 to $30 a square foot, whereas the LVT is usually $7 to $9. So that's something that depending on flooring materials and options, I mean, those are alternates that allow you to have flexibility and choice. But again, from a design aspect, it's not a cost increase for us to do that.
Thank you.
What, if any, consideration have you given to the long-term maintenance and operation efficiencies to the building and the various building systems? Can you cite some examples to the HVA system, electrical systems, whatever?
Just to introduce myself, I've not been here before. My name is Ken Kaufman with Moore Engineering Mechanical Electrical Engineering Company that's going to be involved in the project. So we do a lot of energy modeling to look at system efficiencies. That's something we start out, and we kind of, that kind of continues to evolve as we go through the design. And one of the things I did want to point out as we go through that, you're looking at the energy efficiencies, and you can see what your savings may be with different options, you know, whether it be a system, whether it be something in the building, the windows, you talked about the glass. We would look at that as part of that, the orientation, how that impacts everything. What often gets lost, and that is actually what you brought up, and that's the maintenance cost associated with it. As you get into mechanical systems in particular... As you get into mechanical systems in particular, and you're looking at trying to increase your efficiencies, it's very common that when you increase efficiencies, you're also increasing complexity of your, of your systems. What we don't want to see happen is to give you extremely energy efficient building and all the savings that you have are spent in trying to maintain it. So those discussions are had early. Again, we, because we're looking at this holistically, we want to bring these up very early in the, in the plan because it does impact your building. And we want to talk, make sure you're aware of the decisions that are being made. We want you to make the decisions based on the information we give you that shows you that maybe boiler A may, may have a history of this much in terms of what it costs to maintain it versus something that might be more complicated that would have a higher cost. There's, there's a really importance to looking at that from a maintenance standpoint because you don't want to get into long-term maintenance contracts that you're going to have to maintain to keep systems running. Cause there are costs that often get lost as you're looking through it from a, the energy model standpoint. So that's, while that's one part, part of it, we actually do look at the other components associated with the maintenance.
So we also wanted to go back to this image that we spoke about earlier, Solos Cohen Elementary School, northeast Philadelphia, 20 miles from here. Probably one of the strong takeaways was this is actually a LEED Platinum school, 48% energy reduction over a standard building. We worked with the, the school district actually to complete all the grant application and bring additional state dollars to the project. But one of our challenges very early on was the durability of the systems. The school district has very, are very robust and large building engineer program in the district. But really, when you break down to individual buildings, it was a concern about maintaining the systems long-term. One of the most efficient systems is a geothermal water source heat pump. The problem with that is it takes a lot of maintenance, as, as Ken mentioned, with, with certain systems. They wanted a very sort of robust, durable, low maintenance system. So we ended up going with a four pipe, four pipe system with rooftop units on the building. We focused more attention on the thermal envelope of the exterior of the building as well as solar on the roof that had very minimal maintenance. Really essentially, it's, it's more of a, the maintenance is every five to 10 years versus routinely replacing heat pumps in closets adjacent to every single classroom in the building that you would have in a geothermal system. So it's looking at those different systems very early on and then talking about what are your goals, how are you going to maintain it over this, over a long term? Do you have the staff to, to, to maintain it? Is a material more fit, efficient, but is it going to be, need to be replaced every 15 years versus every 30 or 40 years? And just having that back and forth and ultimately looking not at the first cost, but what is that, that cost of a, of a building over 30 or 40 years?
Okay. Hello. So my question is about your approach to being flexible and decision-making as you finalize the, the design. For example, you talked about designing to budget, talked about community engagement. So how do you balance those two? Let's say, for example, the, the feedback was to switch the parking and the building as an example.
I'm going to interject a concept that we like to use to develop guiding principles. As we go through the design process, we're going to want to solicit from the community, the administrative team, the board, if you will, that top 10 list. This project must accomplish these 10 things. That's kind of our edict to make sure that as we're developing our design, that we are addressing that. As much as if we are not, perhaps it could be a budget issue, something that you as a board feels very important, our job is to say, this is the implications of that. Or perhaps that might need to be considered as a design. So all through this process, the, kind of the beauty of those guiding principles are we all know what they are. And that is how the option and the design should be judged at each stage. Have we met all of them? And if we have not, why not? And there's an answer. There needs to be some justification perhaps that maybe something did not get put in that list. So one of the approaches would be guiding principles to manage that, that process.
I had one follow-on just for you. How will you support the project, given the distance from your office to, to us effectively providing oversight, given the length of the project and need to be onsite?
I think first thing I'd mention is, you know, Jeff pointed out, one of our most recent projects was not very far. But, but as a firm, I would point out that we didn't mention, we were a corporate architects for Cabela's and designed 32, 35 stores. I'm not even sure if anyone's familiar with Cabela's. It's an out, outdoor fitter. We designed 35 stores throughout the entire United States, which was much, much closer California than, than you are in San Diego and so forth. So right now, our firm is a, I'd say we're a tri-state firm, clearly Pennsylvania, and we have many clients that are much, much farther, West Virginia, but we have offices there too. So we don't see the distance as an issue. In fact, being close to Harrisburg, where a lot of the municipalities or, excuse me, not municipalities, but like PlanCon, Department of Labor and Industry, a lot of those entities are five or 10 minutes from us. But we don't see this distance as an issue whatsoever.
Thank you for answering all of our questions. And thank you for your very thoughtful design and, and engagement in this process. Your professionalism has been great. I realize that you may have other slides that you prepared that our questions didn't allow you to demonstrate. So if there is something else that you would like to share within, with your hour, we're happy to listen.
I'm going to, actually, could you hit the Michelle Ballyet slide? Security, there was several references to security. And I'd love to share this comment that a previous superintendent had asked of us in terms of security. This was in the context of an elementary school. However, Dr. Ballyet had said to me, in the height of recent events, we realize that these students must be safe, they must feel safe in order to learn. And she started to describe the experience of when she took her family to Disney, that she was very aware of all the security measures that were in place, but at no point did it ever take away from the experience. And that was how she conveyed to us the level of security. It's very sensitive. Every client, every district is different in terms of how they perceive security. But that was kind of a philosophical takeaway for us to ensure these are schools first. They have to be designed so that the children feel safe, the students feel safe, the staff, and anyone that enters the building, but it's still a school. And that's one comment I think we didn't get a chance to make, I thought, since there were several security comments. I think the other comment I would make with regard to the cost effectiveness, that was kind of sprinkled through some of your other comments. When we were showing the graph of where the state average in Pennsylvania continued to climb and our firm was able to deliver those projects, many of the projects in those cases were LEED certified and several were LEED Platinum. So we were designing LEED Platinum schools below the state average when other firms were not able to deliver that level of sustainability, building efficiency, and also cost in public education is about building program. Again, I said this earlier, you have one shot to do this building. Architects that might be designing above that $10 or $20 a square foot in a building footprint this size is a significant number, millions of dollars. And State College, I think the one thing that, as that board went through a rigorous selection process, as you have gone, that board came and the superintendent came to conclusion that that directly translated, you could kind of reverse engineer that to, am I going to have to cut my program because this architect designs a considerably higher per square foot building? And obviously the answer was no. And we were selected for that high school project and they were able to fulfill all of their program square footage within their budget and make no sacrifices. I think we also do not look at value engineering in terms of reducing building program. Again, these are schools and the educational program is, is fairly sacred. That, that's what we're here to accomplish. So reducing cost by reducing program is, is not our intent. There are ways that you've heard Ken talk about the building systems, Jeff and security, building envelope. We have a lot of ideas to share to really kind of find the sweet spot for the right project, for the right fit, for your budget and, and your, your community.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful.
Great.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
All on paper.
Aye.